The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a load off. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. First item is the minutes, approval of the minutes from the April twenty first business session.
Would be approved.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, public comments? Our two illustrious members of the community.
No comments tonight.
Keep up to yourself, huh?
Yes.
Alrighty, next up, old business, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding animal control. So I know the last time we talked about talking no crow with you.
Yeah, I talked to city administrator, no crow, and he said what they would do is, uh, they just got their shelter in place last month, they got certified, and they got finished, and all that. So he said they had already been in contract with, by, contacted by city, uh, Blomjack and city bait city to use them as animal control officers also. So what he told me is that he was gonna get with his board and decide, see if they would be willing to contract out, and then get with his, uh, attorneys to come up with some kind of memorandum of understanding. And once that gets passed, feedback forward to us.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to piggyback off of what Joe said. I also, I reached out to a, the lady that runs the Old Drum Animal Shelter, Animal Rescue in Warrensburg, um, and she is working on getting some contacts, just for some, a small town type of agencies that may be able to assist us, maybe with grants or something like that, so, but, just, yeah.
Very nice, thank you. Mr. Young, too.
I'm gathering it all in.
It looked like there was something profound getting ready to happen.
I have a discussion I'm asking.
It's like, it's like, you go to my office. Uh, so, okay, next up, new business, uh, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the use of city hall. Uh, last time, I think you recall, uh, Tony had, uh, talked about working with the LDS, where on the genealogy project up here, so, I think, Alex, did you have anything on that?
Yeah, sure, I spoke with Steve, and you all can allow whoever you want to meet within city hall. The issue is, once you open the door, literally and metaphorically, uh, then you have a hard time keeping people out, because this is a public space, it's owned by the taxpayers, so allowing one group does open the door for another. The secondary issue is, if they wanna meet on weekends or evenings, they gotta figure out, at least someone's gotta be here, um, whether it be on the city side, or, and someone, an older person could be here, um, but those are the two main issues. And it's best to allow apolitical groups to be here, um, for example, if the Jackson County Communist Party wanted to come be here, you'd open it up to just about every kind of political persuasion. So, just with those thoughts in mind, you all are allowed to do whatever you want with this building, just know, once you crack that door, you gotta let almost everyone in.
Does the issue around having a board sponsor over city cover, like, uh, I believe Mr. Buck said that he would sponsor that group or what have you, so we'd be here to provide that onsite?
Yeah.
Oversight?
Sure, that would certainly keep them from having to incur any expenses from having Joe or a city staff member stay here, extra hours, and have to pay for that, um, yeah, and all of them, all of them can sponsor that.
And that would also bring a little bit of accountability back to?
Yeah.
The, the elected officials, so if, yeah, if I do sponsor the Communist Party, the voters are gonna know that in the next election.
And ask some questions, yeah, that's right.
But, but it, it wouldn't keep them out, though, were you saying that if they could still say, yeah, I wanna, I want this, and, and I'm gonna pay you regardless of whether he wants to be here or not?
Well.
If they didn't have a sponsor, they would?
If they didn't have a sponsor, that'd be one thing, yes, but Steve and I would come up with an argument to why we could keep certain people out, but there, there's a strong presumption that once you allow a public space for someone, the freedom of speech is that you'd allow it to just, so, just go into it knowing that would be our guidance.
So are we going forward, then, if you have to have a sponsor or a reward, they are present?
But, uh, that's, I think that's, there've been the proposed in the past, I thought we discussed, the, I think it was the Tractor Club, or somebody was wanting to do something here.
So, uh, hey, did you think that you'd be?
I, I, I think they were willing to, I don't know, but I don't think, I didn't know if they ever actually met here.
I like the warrior, like, cookie brought down, why not? Huh? I don't wear a wig anymore.
Did you go to the temple?
If no one wanted to sponsor, whoever wanted to use the building could argue that you're just giving them the cold shoulder, they're locking them out, 'cause you don't agree with what they're saying, so, the whole sponsor thing is a good idea. It's not a complete remedy for this, whereas if, if none of you wanted to sponsor someone, they could still have the strong argument for being able to use a public space, you made available to other citizens. And same thing goes with the whole paying to use the building. If you don't make whoever pay, then the next person that comes along is gonna say, well, why are you gonna make me pay? What's the difference between us and them? And that's where you kinda get to the issue of First Amendment, because this is a public forum.
And then, do we hear from ourselves about litigation, by the way?
No, I wouldn't think so, no, not, not unless you're openly sponsoring some criminal activity happening here, would you open it to litigation?
Well, what I meant was, if we don't wanna sponsor something, we, and we sponsored this person, but not that person, do we have to turn it upside?
Not the not sponsoring thing, but if you said, no one here's gonna sponsor you, but you can still use the building, but you have to pay for someone's time, 'cause no one here's gonna sponsor you, so you gotta pay for a city hall, that could protect us from litigation. If we allow the Republican Party to be here, but we didn't allow the Democratic Party to be here, that would certainly open us up to litigation.
So as long as you have to sponsor on board, we wouldn't, as far as all of them, you know, we wouldn't have to charge a fee, but if nobody wanted to sponsor, and then they have to pay a fee, first, uh, city employee would be here?
That would be reasonable, correct, yeah.
Okay, if, if I sponsored someone, does that mean that I am, whenever they're having their meeting?
Yeah, it would, the, the idea in hope would be that you'd be available to meet here, so that way we wouldn't have to have a individual?
Not sponsoring, but here.
Be here.
So you turn out the lights and lock the door.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'll, or I might, I do, yeah.
So, in light of that, uh, is there a desire? Because currently, we haven't been sponsored, that is the provision in ordinance, right? But I don't think we have a thing about an either-or.
I see, that's indefinite.
Yeah, it's indefinite, it's just left open to where, but you can have something in an ordinance, but then you can also have a policy. And our policy is, you know, yeah, be our policy that you must not sponsor, and if not, then you shall pay for the use of city hall.
I'd like to make a motion. But if they, but if they pay for city hall, I mean, you're, as long as they're paying, then they, they don't possess anybody?
Well, not just anybody.
Without a sponsor?
This group that we're considering is a genealogical study. To me, that's apolitical, that doesn't involve any kind of politics. So you could say yes to this group, you could say yes to a tractor club, the Rotary Club, but you could say no to the Republican Party, 'cause you could say, we're not touching politics, this is a local meeting place for local groups that are apolitical. It's when you open it to any kind of political group, then you're gonna have a very hard time closing it to any political group. But you're opening it now to apolitical groups, which means you're gonna have a hard time closing it to apolitical groups. That makes sense.
You, you're sponsoring that, right?
Yes, that's what I thought, yep.
Is there, can anybody give me an example of an apolitical group that wouldn't wanna do it?
I don't, I mean, we'll take, like, a bit of the light of Columbus, one of the areas.
Yeah, I mean, I saw one, yeah, I saw one, one year. I feel like, I can't think that far ahead, so.
A religious group would be a good example. Uh, Steve and I would argue that religious groups are often political, and that they're arguing for one side or another of something, or something going on.
To walk in that line.
Right, exactly, and so we would argue that it would be close to them, and then, same thing for religion, if you open it to Christians, you have to open it to Judaism, Islam, any other kind of religion that would want to be here.
Then follow on Church and State?
Yeah, um, Church and State is more in principle, it's not actually in the Constitution anywhere, so you can allow it, but again, that's a really, uh, that's a line you don't usually wanna cross, 'cause like I said, then you're opening it up to anybody being able to practice their faith in it.
Yeah, religion's in here dancing.
Yes.
So is that a, is that a line to what, or to walk?
I like the idea. Just, you know, as long as we have sponsors, then we don't, then we have to pay, um, and then each time, we bring it from the board, and make the board, you know, aware, of course.
So, would be the, probably be a policy around that, and then bring it back to folks for review? So, exactly what you're buying.
Joe, with your time here, has there been a lot of calls or requests about potential using this space?
Yeah, we did, uh, like, in fact, uh, come up this month, we got the homeless sensation for, uh, OJ Springs, so they're gonna come and use it for one night.
Okay.
And then we had, uh, live across the street, used it one time. And we do have a policy right now, where you could, if, if you have to pay like fifty dollars to rent it, and you get like a hundred dollars to plug it down for cleaning fee, and if it's clean, you get a hundred dollar back, and then there's a policy also that states that the city administrator or mayor can waive either one of the fees.
What does town hall charge, does anybody know?
It's like a hundred, less than, maybe a hundred dollars. Oh, it's like, I think you have to have a minimum of two or four hours.
Minimum four hours, fifty dollars an hour, a hundred dollar deposit.
A hundred dollars for what?
Huh?
What was that, a head trim bar?
A hundred dollar deposit.
Deposit.
And I just checked for a graduation party, so this is recent.
So reunions, weddings, yeah.
I don't know, really wanna get into weddings, or we can, I'll talk for a minute.
That's safe.
Probably we have a building.
Apolitical, I don't mean it's open, you're opening that door, is what he's trying to tell us.
But, we would, we would review, council could put together a policy for us, and you could look at it and see what it looks like.
Give you, give everybody time to think about what could come in and what is.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, next, uh, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding amending chapter two forty-five mobile food truck vendors of the Buckner, City of Buckner Municipal Code. I think that, you know, it's electronically, so I'm assuming it's in the packet. Yes.
It is.
And, uh, Mr. Norris, and Mr. Colley, bring this forward.
Well, my piece, uh, plus, I'd like to remove the five hundred dollar annual fee for food truck vendors to, um, come to town. And, uh, I do have some clarification on some stuff, uh, private businesses that have food trucks, do they have to adhere, if it's on their private property, to these ordinances, how they are written right now?
I think yes, it's the law. We got, I guess, here's my speculation.
Yeah, at least the law says all mobile food truck vendors. Yeah, and same with, uh, in the state of Missouri, as far as getting their health and safety licenses, yeah, even if it's on private property, they, yeah.
I mean, to tell you the truth, like, the school had a taco truck out here this week, and I'm sure they didn't apply for a five hundred dollar permit to do that. Uh, so I think that that's overdue, and I don't believe we need it. I'd like to, maybe, consider maybe a special use permit, um, and when, like, the banks and the schools and things do these events, they could just get the special use permit for that event, for food trucks.
And I thought I saw something in here that did speak about, uh, provision for special events.
There is, it's, uh, section two forty-five, zero three zero.
And that's, to me, that's special use.
I'm sorry, it's section two forty-five, one third.
Okay, so, I'm seeing the same thing, you're seeing the, you're trying to throw me out.
So the motorized food truck vendor may be parked outside of the vending district, or participating in a special event or festival, if consent of the vendor organizer and the city administrator.
So, if, if we'd have said yes to the bank, that would have covered it?
And shouldn't, isn't that enough? I mean, the, the five hundred, uh, just takes care, kinda helps, helps prevent or, or, protect our parking morgue businesses. But isn't that enough to allow them to come in for the special events?
Well, I wondered if you do it on a one-time basis, you know, is, really what you're looking at is your lost sales tax revenue, probably from our standpoint, more than the effect on the fixed assets, but, you know, instead of five hundred dollars a year, if you charged them fifty dollars a day, or something like that, so if you're coming months a month, you'd be better off buying, so maybe it's an either-or, five hundred annually, or fifty dollars a month, or something like that, to where you're kind of offsetting, and I don't know how even all the ones that pay the five hundred, how you go by collecting, I'm assuming they would have to collect sales tax, just like any other business, but I don't know how it gets reported, so is it, is it going into, where the business is licensed, or is it going into the location of commerce? But I don't know how they track that.
But can we waive that for the special events?
Yeah, for, yeah.
That's why, well, the other thing with the special events, though, I mean, every time somebody applies for this, it has to come to the board and approve, right?
I think if we had a structure, well, if it says approve by the city, if we had a structure for Joe, I don't know, last gave it out, then Joe could approve it within the parameters of the ordinance.
City administrator?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Not necessarily asked about the Joker.
Doesn't have a check on that, because, you know, you get somebody who, on Monday says, hey, I want a food truck on Wednesday, and we don't need till Thursday, of course.
Yeah, it's, it's set up to be administrative, so where, not every request is coming before you, a special use permit request does come before you by our code. But if they're gonna pay the five hundred, that's all handled in front of us.
So they'd have to wait, is there any, any, what doesn't wait panel in that?
Well, I think you could say.
It waits the five hundred?
I think if you said the, the, I mean, on the special use permit, that's one thirty, right?
Yeah, one thirty.
Uh, something, I think, probably along the lines of, uh, consent of the event organizer and the city of Buckner administrator, and then you could probably put something in that says, uh, permitting fee may be waived at the discretion of the council, or something like that.
I mean, like, for example, a park board didn't come to us and ask us to waive the fee, but they're having an event. So how do we determine when we charge a fee, and they're not asking for the permit, and just, whatever? They're, they didn't ask that, so do we still have to collect the five hundred dollar fee from each of those vendors? I mean, that's.
It would seem like they're actually doing what the, we probably should, but I don't have a, so we probably need to clean up the message.
Yeah, I, I can think about that, the thing about spark, the park board, is that it's created by Missouri statutes, and the park board has its own level of authority, separate and different from your all, especially since they collect a park board tax, if I remember correctly, they're able to use those funds how they want, because it's, park boards subject to some of the city's oversight. So that could be a situation here, but we can certainly clean that up in the ordinance to clear up things, events, self by the park board.
I do like the option of maybe a daily fee, you know, just that what, I think, 'cause if, I'm a business owner of a, you know, food truck, and I see this, like, well, I don't know how many times I'm coming out, I'm not paying five hundred dollars. If it was fifty dollars for a day or something, then maybe they test it out, or, I like that.
But that's, that's why we put it in there, though.
Well, I mean, I still.
That's why we put it in there, to keep the ones who come in and, and put it up, and take the business from our parking morgue.
But they're not coming here.
Yeah, I think you're going to do, use separate markets there.
Yeah, I think there's.
Two separate markets.
I think we kinda knee-jerked on this, um, firstly, I'd like to see us get rid of the vending districts, um, still keep the ordinance that says you have to be at least two hundred feet away from the restaurant. But, I, I, you know, we still have to have fire suppression and all the rest of that, even in here. And I don't see anybody knocking that door, like, after a food truck is here, so, I'm not sure why we have the district department here.
Yeah, 'cause like, what I was looking at, too, because initially, I thought the park would be a place where you could have a land, but it doesn't specify on BB Highway or Buckner Tardsney within the city limits, so you're immediately abutting against BB, so that really takes out, I mean, it covers both axes, any place where you'd really be covered.
Almost the whole room, so.
At the very least, you'd take two out, so you'd have some option to run more.
But if we took out the, uh, vending district, we'd obviously have to amend all the parts of the ordinance that has that in there.
So, I guess, would it be better for us to submit you a list of potential edits, and then we could see the edits next time and go in there, versus you having to take notes?
Yeah, I, I've got some notes here, the option for a daily fee, I can do in lieu of the five hundred, um, the permitting fee can be waived, but they come before you all, and then request that, and I can add those, um, Joe and I can exchange emails and get a list, and then I can work on it, propose edits in this ordinance, and I just want you all to remember, for context, if you look here, this was passed in July of twenty twenty, when food trucks were really, because of the pandemic, being, they were very involved, they were kinda everywhere, and the fear was that they were going to take business away from local restaurants, 'cause people were afraid to dine, and it was here and everywhere, so, that's kinda the context behind the regulations, see, for, you know.
Everyone do the thing?
Have you guys got anybody else that didn't wanna add, even if I'm in that quarter, too?
Thank you. Next is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding amending, oh wait, no, that's what we just did, so, I didn't put the check mark on this track. Alright, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding amending chapter three ninety, golf carts and low-speed vehicles for the City of Buckner Municipal Codes, uh, Mr. Norris.
That's me. Um, I have been contacted by most of the people on my street, and I'm included on this. The, uh, well, I, I don't think that the golf cart idea is a bad idea, we have a noise issue, and I've got lots of complaints.
Off the golf cart?
Off the, off the gasoline, golf carts, yeah.
Your work in a hardened day?
Don't know, but I have that. I can tell you this, uh, like, after one of the meetings out here, I was outside talking to some people, and somebody had a gas powered golf cart, and we went, stop talking, we couldn't talk to each other, it was that loud.
I had to give him twenty bucks to do that.
Um, I, the electric golf carts seem to be nice and quiet, but living where, the, the street that I live on, and people that live on that street, they're right there by Casey, and we get a lot of traffic, people don't even get gas. And you can't sit on the porch and talk on the phone on a nice day, 'cause you can't hear the person on the other end of the phone.
Off the golf cart?
Yeah, so I don't know for that loud.
I'm curious how much was, not, not to, like, be, they need to kinda part it in a, or, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out in my brain how a golf cart is any different than having a truck go down the road, 'cause I mean, down our road, we got the side-by-sides, our street legal going down our road all the time, and then we got truck, you know, we got an half ton of trucks going down the road all the time. I mean, I'm just trying to get the, you know, content.
No, and, and this is kinda gonna fall into the next thing here, it's, this is all about noise, um, most trucks have muffler, uh, golf carts, though.
How many, how many, I do have more, and you're fifty, I mean, I know, like, CC or horsepower of the, of the gas powered golf cart.
I have no idea.
I think it's for like ten horse motors, I guess.
It'd be no different than.
I'm the expert here, who's got, I don't know.
Well, I'm a mechanic, too, it'd be no different than, than a person driving around without a muffler. You just tell them, you go walk up to them and say, hey, you gotta put enough muffler on that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, it's the same, so it's no different.
You're asking the, the, uh.
Well, we don't, we don't get rid of, we don't get rid of trucks, because people are idiots and drive without mufflers.
But, well, I think it may come down to, is just, uh, working with the chief to coordinate some kind of reinforcement mechanism. Do we, do we have, I mean, do we have a mechanism for, for, you know, if I was driving my truck without a muffler, would there be an mechanism in years?
Yeah, because it's an actual traffic law, where excessive muffler noise, that play with effective equipment, by the way, not having installed it, there, there are things in place by the state that not necessarily warrant what he's talking about.
So we just, if we added a provision to the ordinance that spoke to excessive noise, or what have you, give you.
And that's what I was just talking about, is our, our normal noise ordinance for that runs from ten PM to six AM, so anything outside of that, but I don't remember, a few months ago, somebody brought up.
Yeah, the music, or whatever.
So we're kinda limited during the day on what we can do, and the, those vehicles are not required by city ordinance, we inspect anything like Cora's, they're required to have safety equipment, to be registered with the city, but they're not required to have any exhaust, kind of like, or stuff like that.
But the, the noise piece, if we addressed that, for like, any vehicle, whether.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know I'd heard, uh, some folks up here, Rebecca Ridge, talking about dirt bikes running down through there, so it's, it'd give you another tool, and the tool box to help, uh, not only are they maybe underage and operating them erratically, doesn't it need one more tool to kinda create a probable cause?
And that's, the more you guys do up front, the better it's gonna be, uh, a little bit hindsight last week or so, the sheriff's office has kinda decided they don't want a new court up there anymore, so it's not a profit realization, trying to find a new home, and it has it right now, unless something changes, so there's a possibility, if that goes away because of funding, we may not have that ability to take kids up there and run them through that program, to deal with some of the issues with motorcycles and the four wheeler, and it's gonna fall back on parents who are from that little, how we're able to.
'Cause I was intrigued, I think, I can't remember, if it was the state law or the ordinance that was providing that for minors operating like a mini bike or something, that the sheriff or the police could impound it for seven days.
Oh, I don't, you'd have no problem with it.
I thought that would, maybe, you know, I know you, you just have a lot of space back there, but, you know, you, you, you put it in the garage for a week, and it might remind them of use it right, or don't use it at all, so it's.
Uh, we've had several instances of a possibility, and one of them, where we've interacted with our vice up there, um, they've been warned several times, and I, we actually spoke to one about three weeks ago from again, so, it's an older listener, and it goes away.
There's a lot of abuse with kids in that, a lot, I've seen that, yeah.
I said, Katie's probably around sixteen, and still not licensed to be on the street, no insurance, I think.
I have, and I don't have, you know, I, I don't have a dog in that, as far as the gas golf carts, but, um, I, I, I'm the, and this is just from my view, you know, we, we put, we put it in there, and people go out and buy it, and they're not cheap. If they, if they buy, if I buy a brand-new golf cart, it's anywhere from, I mean, it's, like, just a little under ten grand, and if they just bought a gas-powered, it's not making noise, I hate to put it long in there, so can't have it now.
No, I mean, you, you guys have been in the noise area of that, for us to be able to enforce it, but it has to be based off of complaint, and a lot of this stuff is based on complaint, if I don't have a witness, when I go up there, and I'm walking up the street, it's really hard for me to enforce something, I can go out in the yard, have it knocked off, but five minutes later, I have a neighbor back out there.
So, does that, uh, that's counsel, makes sense, we could somehow tie a noise issue to this, or?
Yeah, certainly, like, uh, chief said, the, the issue, if you wanna call it that, with our noise complaints, that it really only deals with nighttime noise, daytime noise really is not covered, and because the golf cart isn't like a, a motor vehicle, it's not covered by the motor vehicle ordinances either, so it's kinda fallen between two things, the noise and the motor vehicle, but no one's gonna argue golf carts are motor vehicles, so I think the best way, the most sensible way to address it would be in the noise ordinance.
Okay, and then, so we could also change the noise ordinance to expand the time on that, or accept the vehi, or make motor vehicles exempt from the timeline?
We could, yeah, or just, I think something in here to add to say excessive noise at any time is unreasonable.
I would agree with them, because in just previous experience, well, for some wives, you do have people that work nice and sleepy during the day, and we do get those calls during the day, because somebody's outside beating on something, and they go, and they don't talk to the neighbor, it doesn't seize, it doesn't stop, it at least gives those people the opportunity to address their problem from.
And the other I heard was, with more people working from home, they'll be on a WebEx, and somebody's up there, nee, nee, and said to the house, and it's not a tree trimmer, so, yes, so we could look at that as well.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't, we can do, like, people doing work around the house.
Well, that's, exactly.
Or build, you know, building a deck, or.
Enforcement is not like, well, that's great, so, when you look at it, by situation by situation, we get pretty clear, I'm saying.
Yeah, and, and that's why we gotta be careful.
But then also address that it doesn't matter whether it's a golf cart, or ATV, or a motor scooter, it's, if it's making too much noise, then we would build us a mechanism to intervene.
Yeah, we would just call it a motorized vehicle, if you're using a motor.
And I know it's not related to the sound piece, but I was looking in there on the motorized bicycle piece, it doesn't do anything to speak to e-bikes.
Oh, yeah, which is a recent, so.
Yeah, I just actually have an article here from the Missouri Habit Control, says they have a code, like, remind parents, it's illegal to operate motorized bicycles on failing streets and highways unless the operator has a driver's license.
Yes, I've noticed that in Lexington in particular, there's a guy that I heard lost his license, and I've never seen him pedal that thing, but I've seen. So, are we, everybody satisfied on this?
Yeah.
Well, this is kinda variation, I think.
It is.
Regarding motorcycles, ATVs, and go-karts?
Yeah, there, there's, there's currently nothing in, in any of our licenses, where the word dirt bike or golf cart appears anywhere. And, uh, as far as the ATVs go, our, our ordinance says that you cannot ride an ATV, uh, on the street. Yeah, I've seen them on the street. The only ones that are allowed on the street are, A, they're, uh, owned and operated like that for official use, and, uh, or operated for agricultural purposes, or industrial, all kinds of purposes, you know, official signage, you know, to main the operation. Uh, other than that, no, I know that there are a few more on my street that own ATVs and ride them up and down the street at forty and fifty miles an hour, um, along with dirt bikes, um, and according to the Dirt Bike Law of Missouri, you can't ride a dirt bike on a public street unless you have a valid license, more so. More so, if you'll need to contribute your dirt bike to make the street legal. Uh, headlights, brake lights, turn signals, et cetera. Uh, horns, front rear brakes, and muffler.
So would we need an ordinance if there's a state law?
You, you can be more restrictive, you can be less, and I would recommend with what we've seen, we've buffalo double the same thing. The dirt bikes, if you guys label it as must have appropriate attire to be on the roadway and be insured and licensed or anything like that, it would make it a lot more effective for us to be able to interact and stop that. Uh, right now, looking at whether it's bicycle or just be fifty cc's or hundred. Um, other than that, the city definition, the only other ones in there is motorcycle, desert car, motorcycle enforcement. What's your definition of motorcycle in the city laws? Just two wheels or more, and that's about it. So if we had something in place to limit the dirt bikes to being off-road only or on-road only based on safety equipment, then I'd need to go a lot further.
And I was thinking right in there too, that if you're under twenty-six, you have to wear a helmet.
So there's a state law that got passed that teaches you, I think, um, August twenty-eighth, and yeah, it's twenty-six or under, and twenty-six and above, and like we were talking earlier, like Mr. Norris and I. It is a secondary law, it's like seatbelts, so it's not something that we can stop and enforce just on the wind, because we don't think they're of age and that could be a violation to come to.
So if they were too noisy, then this would be an.
It would be, for a reason, to come to conduct with them.
Speaking of the, uh, since Missouri has a health law, now ours says you have to wear it all the time.
Ours needs to be amended.
Ours needs to be amended.
It's a message heard city.
And I'm already working on that, so the next meeting might be a little packed with proposals and notices and ones I need to go through, but I've got some work, yeah.
This concludes the session of the Norris special.
I want to feel like Boris just once.
So, uh, next on the, uh, program, elected officials comments, uh, Mr. Buck.
Mr. Buck, um, a couple things. Joe, we, I briefly spoke with Joe about this, but I kind of, I had a, I had a vision, all right? Follow my vision here. We got this big project that we're gonna start on North Hudson. Anybody except Joe.
South Hudson, right?
Or South Hudson, I'm sorry. Anybody except Joe, tell me what day that's gonna start?
May twenty-second.
June fifth. Was that right?
Joe?
Was that right, Joe?
June sixth.
June sixth.
Oh, D-Day.
So my thought is, we should class, not plaster so much, but three, four, five signs in town saying something to the effect of, yourselves, the sales tax increase has allowed us to perform this job, this, this project. Um, if you want to learn more about the project, feel free to contact me, Paul, whatever. But put it up, so everybody knows we're using tax money to do what we said we were gonna do with it. And then when the whole project's said and done, do some kind of ribbon cutting type of thing, negative big shit, that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, we get a lot of negative comments, so let's make something big about it and say, hey, this is our project, this is what your money is allowing us to do.
Uh, is there, uh, I know that, like, see those state signs that are, you know, progress as promised or whatever?
Something like that.
Maybe get some of those put up.
What else do we have, what's this value uses, like, your tactile that you're.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my thought.
That's kind, yeah, that's, that's kind of.
Maybe we need to run those stats or whatever, because there's a, uh, tax time.
Did you, have we gotten the modem thing for this?
Yeah, but it's fixed.
So we could put it on the message board down there. It also might be just a nice heads up for folks headed down town to know, hey, construction's starting June sixth or whatever day it is.
Tax caster.
Yeah, 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 well, and we got, and also just to let you know, I got an email today from Phil's Peyton, and they also said it's only gonna take a couple weeks to do that project. But as for the providing, you know.
That's good, that's good news.
Yeah, so, maybe we can plan a five year plan, right? Well, I'm sure one's about thirty-five, right?
Yeah.
Could be some other time.
I'm sure you do, if you do it for the sales tax issue.
I just like the idea of just having it known, you know, blasting on Facebook, blasting on everything you can. Just put it out there, cause I mean, those are, people know, you know. Twitter, I don't, I don't do Twitter.
If it's set for June sixth, let's, I'll quit, but they just say, in fact, like, you told me today, tend to be set for June sixth. Once I get a definite date, I put it on Facebooks and I go up there and send it to Facebook pages.
And sorry, I didn't ask you before the meeting, uh, I was on the topic again, but, but my recurring question about the Salsa Rudder that went, I guess, now downtown or whatever, where are we on that?
It's, it possibly gets fixed now. They took it in there and it's, they're gonna go through it all and have it fixed in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
So we should have it for the, what did you like? Should, they cut it down there with the tire works.
To follow up on that, uh, we have like a reminder to make the schedule work out for all.
They, they have to take care of it and.
I mean, all they put in, yeah, is, rather than make the schedule work out.
Yeah, we, I mean, they do a daily checklist, they're supposed to be doing a daily checklist on all.
Yeah, we got it all, okay, we gotta sign off on it. Does anybody follow up on that? I know, I know busy and stuff like that, but would they sign off on this checklist? Do we have like a check and balance kind of system that somebody goes and actually verifies? Cause I know, I got guys at work that'll just say, yeah, it's checked, but they really didn't, you know, and so you.
Yeah, I have John, I love it, so, yeah, I suppose we check that on each.
If he signs off on it too, that he, yeah. As long as we have somebody that we can, people we can hold accountable, it's all good.
Before I say on the weekend. And the following weekend, go get your calendar for the cleanups.
It's on the, it's on electronic board, I got that uploaded yesterday.
Do you mind the calendar, put up a good time for us while I have a good time?
See, I had a good time last year, I saw you.
And then had one every time.
You were a broom, I think, wasn't you? Um, we're wanting to have a hovel repair, did you tell me about some new hovel over on something?
Oh, yes, they're four twenty-four's, quite large. I just talked about it today about new pillows, we're gonna go back, you know, once a week, get a list, I mean, uh, JD's been gone for, please days, and did it for the last six weeks, doing his subway exam. And then for all the veins, it's been almost possible to try to keep up with it, but.
Yeah.
Supposed to be nice on next week and hopefully quit man. So we're gonna, I told them that, I love it, you know, one day we release two pillows, one day we.
JD, how much money does?
What do you mean, a class?
Yeah.
I go take my state test on the seventh of June, today was the last day of class.
Study up.
Where, where are we with that? The parking lot back behind the police station.
Well, I was gonna say that till next week, but I had, I contacted Phil's Peyton and they had a guy came out and did it. And I was gonna get back with him, see if I could get a pledge of will, because it is extremely. Uh, to do the alleyway itself, they want thirty-two thousand dollars. And to do the, uh, police parking area, you know, in front of the bays and where they park the cars at, that's gonna be another ten thousand dollars.
How much for a load of that one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised by five, five, I was gonna try to talk to him, I mean, we did the whole street for eighty thousand, I mean, you could, it's gonna cost half a month to do that alleyway.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So I was gonna get with the, that's what I was.
Especially then, because at the same time they do the street.
Well, that's it, the plant was.
Or really just bring the millings and spread them back there and roll them.
Well, then chip, what's that stuff cost, that stuff you just put down and chip and seal, what's that cost?
I don't know what it costs.
That's what I'm still running on my street, it lasts a long time. A long time. That, and I'm bringing this up to that alley behind, um, the post office is like moon crater. You can't even drive through there, so I don't know if we can at least run it greater through that. That, and I don't know if that's city, but I'm guessing it is, we live easy.
Yeah.
But that alley is ridiculous. I don't, I don't know how ridiculous this is right now.
I realize this one here, because we have obviously a community interest, uh, but when you look at, you know, fixing an alley for thirty thousand or doing Jefferson Street, and it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking of grade over there, I'm not talking about.
Yeah, well, just like, I, it's just like we talked about, let's see, all that stuff, once you stop doing one alley, then you guys still have to do it, but we give requests all the time to do alleyways.
That particular one there is businesses.
I'm saying, let's just open it up.
Yeah, sure. Well, we want so much money, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we against gravel factor?
Do we, do we?
That's kind of, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know.
Every time you put gravel out there, it pushes out of the asphalt holes in the ground, because the subgrate below that asphalt.
If we were to take out, uh, subgraded asphalt, if we were to be able to take, get that removed and then build a.
If you're able to fix the soft spot underneath it, is that right?
That's what I'm saying, you're gonna have to take the soft spot.
That's what, but this alley does, is an asphalt alley, because some of the users would eat up and then just don't know.
I'm just kidding, if they, if they just prep it and just put gravel down there, I mean, if they get, if they get the soft spots and stuff.
They're gonna have to do, you have to figure something out, still have the panel back there, back there.
Well, I would say.
That being the police department, I think we ought to be thinking about.
Yeah, I'm just thinking alternative action, just in case the, you know, thirty-two thousand.
I know what he's complaining about, that, that, what's the greater cost, just the greatest.
We don't have a, we have a contract.
Cause you need to find out what, what that cost is.
Maybe with a tractor and a blade, just back drainage kind of stuff.
That's what I'm, if you can find that out.
Well, some bucket, just, we got a bucket, we got a bucket, it'd be better, many thousands to do it. Can imagine, we'll see.
Gravel.
Gravel, cost of gravel.
Gravel.
Hole in the hole.
Have a dump truck, gravel, whatever the day in there for a while.
What, three, four loads, or maybe three, question went back to.
I said, I saw it's like the other old, if you.
I used to work construction and heavy equipment, so maybe three is great, long roll, if we could not do that and it didn't work that.
That, that too, they put, I don't know what the park people, Little Blue did, but they put that gravel down and stuff with like rock dust and they dried it up.
Thanks, so it's, what it is, it's a, it's a, it's a dusty and it's, it hardens up like concrete, yes, but you have to have a solid base underneath it, like Chief said. Um, if you go back like an AB three, um, and, and prep it, if you do everything correctly, and then you put that, that milling dust on top, and milling's pretty cheap actually. But, uh, the dusty, or you wanna call it, is, it, it hardens like concrete, it really does, that's what the trails, you know, make.
I realize I'm mainly only seeing bicycles and joggers, so it's a little less the main.
They see, I drive a lot. I drive a lot.
Really pricey. To cut down the alleyways for children.
Who would price a chip and seal and?
That dude?
Who's the right one?
Well, they say, they, they put up with the same thing, the base a little bit bad, but I got the.
It's, it's around five times, but even if you guys save your milling, some of your, that asphalt, they put it in there, rolled in, actually packed it, and it puts some poppy butter up. So that's the same thing, every six, seven months or a year, it washes out, it's like the rains, it has nowhere to go, and there's, with the rains, guys start pushing it out, every time it comes through, it's.
Off that, I got one thing, set up, they off the alley, we think, the stoplight up here on twenty-four, it's B B. It's, it's, it's turning the wrong direction. I know that's a modot issue, we needed to, you know, straighten out. It like fell at one point.
Twenty, twenty. Are you talking about the?
The spotlight is facing towards you southwest.
You're talking about the one that costs the.
The one that has been knocked down by a semi like.
Yeah.
The, the single.
Cost lot.
It's actually spotlighted. You can just get out while we.
Cozy corner, corner or misty corner?
It's on the.
Cozy corner.
Little team's corner?
Yeah.
Three old timers, yeah.
Uh, one, one more thing, I'll shut up.
Is this your last one?
Yeah, how we live in Snapwash, thirty years.
Still down?
Still down. Not the basis last thing.
Uh, now, on top of that, we, we tried to do this wonderful contract thing, but, uh, just got word from one of our guys that we're hiring an academy that Kansas City is apparently not staying in their wheelhouse. And they are offering a new program, we're going to attempt a new program to lateral hire people from outside academy. So if that be the case, I assume it's gonna get harder here pretty quick.
You'd have to work in Kansas City versus working here.
My offer, shithead version and stuff like that, they, they're, they're.
They offer a homicide.
They're working to have new strike.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything, an official? All right, now, take, I want you to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
I have a.